We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krab.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
We have to get you retrained now.
I know.
All right. This evening, we have one announcement, a presentation of the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee's Snowflake Awards, and I'd like to welcome Junior Querrio, Chair of the Beautification Committee, to our microphone here.
I want to thank the Commission for letting us be here tonight and to present this to the recipients who were able to come. I have two members of our group with us, Bev Bishop and Ashreee Gavie are here. This is the 16th year that the Mount Clemens Committee has presented the Snowflake Award for the time and effort in bringing a touch of light by decorating homes in the 2022 holiday season. Now, we did this, the Committee has divided the city into seven areas, and one home from each area was selected for this one-time recognition. But before I pass out the awards, I want to acknowledge everyone in the city who maybe put a candle in the window, hung a wreath on their door, or decorated their home with characters or lights. Your time and effort, be little or large, brought joy to your neighbors, the neighborhood, and the city. Thank you from the city and your neighbors for bringing a touch of Christmas joy. In the past, a snowflake ornament was presented along with a Christmas photo of each home and a certificate of recognition. Since many of us are ready to take down our trees, we thought instead of an ornament, a snowflake sun catcher can hang in the window for the next couple of months, and next year you can hang your ornament on your tree. And so I'd like to show you everything. This is the snowflake that we're giving to the Commission, hanging it in there. And along with that photo was a home and a certificate. And so the first one I'd like to award to is Scott and Tammy Roberts, who live at 164 Market. And this is the first time they decorated for Christmas, so wow.
Cool.
The second one is Robert and Jennifer Uren from 63 Robertson. And their families here because some of them had to have helped. I think Dad was the main one. Okay, I don't know if these people are here or not, but 219 Cass, Michael and Kelly Sterns. 92 Eldridge was Kimberly Smith. 119 Jones was John and Charlotte Norris. That was so cool. You had all those blown-up characters.
We got four more next year.
Thank you, thank you. The next one is 234 Espinon, Randy, and I don't want to slaughter their names, and Robert. And the last one is 240 Riverside, William and Don Buckholz, and they did call me and tell me they could not come. But thank you very much, and one more thing. I had to write it down so I wouldn't forget. Thanks again to everyone who helps make Mount Clemens a more vibrant place to live. Thank you. I have to leave, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were doing laundry.
A woman's desperate. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Oh, it was perfect. Thank you, Junior. And we totally understand, yeah, if you guys want to clear out, it's okay. Thanks, everybody.
We weren't talking about you. You can't leave.
All right, well, go ahead and move on. Are there any other announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports from anyone? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Krab, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
All right, we will move to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the Commission. We ask that you give us your full name, your residential address, and your, oh, and you abide by our three-minute rule. We will have those who are in person address the Commission first, and then we'll go to Zoom. Whoever would like to start us off, you're more than welcome.
That's a hard act to follow. Patrick McKay, 1207 Wellesley Drive. I had to leave the top of the fourth period, Lady Bathers Basketball, leading 21 to 18, to make it here. Hopefully, they held out. Hopefully, they made it.
Once a bather, always a bather.
No, that's right. I hate the way our informational system works because we're always chasing after the fact. The public, and going back to the Water Department situation, the public forums were great. We got information, and then after the fact, we found out there were some things wrong. In the public thing, there was a flyer that went out that Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, pointed out that the $45 million figure was actually $75 million. I don't have the flyer with me, but it said $45 million total cost. If you took the numbers and you did the math over 20 years, it came up to $45 million. No matter which way you sliced it, it was $45 million. It said $45 million. I don't know where $75 million could have possibly come from, but after the fact, I'm hearing $75 million. I have no way to figure that. It went out. Commissioner Dempsey said that if we couldn't get permits, that it would be pointless to go down that road. I got a chance to look at Mr. Bolle's letter, and it's filled with may deny if we did. Could be this, could be that innuendo, and Mr. Shipman said that it was nice that they put it in writing so we had something to reference. He was surprised they put that in writing. I went through that letter with a fine-tooth comb. I have a degree in communication. I know what I'm reading. I know what it says. There was one statement of fact in that letter, paragraph five, second half of the second sentence, and it says, "I cannot determine what the permit," or whether, I actually have it on my phone, but it says, "I cannot determine," let's see here, so I get it right, "I cannot predict what our permitting decision would be." That's the only statement of fact in that letter. It doesn't say we would be denied a permit. That's the only statement of fact. Everything else is innuendo and conjecture. And most of those things cite a brand-new construction. If there was a city of 220,000 people being projected for somewhere up north, they would have to meet a lot of this stuff. We are simply maintaining a system that's already there. We're not really expanding, changing, or anything else. So, a lot of the permits that are suggested in this particular letter don't necessarily apply directly to our situation. You know, there are some things that may or may not. That's possible, sure. But on the whole thing, going back to the $45 million low-interest loan from the state versus the $17 million low-interest loan from the state versus having those interest loans forgiven, approved, not approved, bonding, we're able to be bonded at $51 million according to what the bonding agency said. $45 would put us close, but obviously, we could bond for 45, so if we could bond for 45, we could easily bond for 17, right? If we can bond for 45, we can bond for 17. So if the state doesn't approve either one of those two, 45 or 17, we're going to have to bond for something. If the state approves the 17, well, we'd have to pay it back anyway, so why not just fail-safe?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time?
Patrick Abajuta, 16557 Howard Drive. Just had a couple of questions, needed some clarification in the amendment that hopefully we're discussing, and we might get some clarity here a little bit later. One is that I noticed that there's a small window for the application process. Second, it says first come, first served, pretty much again. So are we standing in line in the dead of winter, doing that all over? Third is that we saw that the amendment showed that the lawsuit has priority during the settlement, so they're one and two. Do we know where those locations are? Are there two applications? Are there six applications? How many different applications are in the process? Because I did see that it was amended as well, stating that it's only one application, or one applicant per location. So I'm not sure if they have priority, if they have more. I'm not sure if that information is available because it's going to depend quite a bit on who's be able to apply if we're already Xed out. So just a little clarification would be great. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mayor Krab, City Commissioners George Cale, 180 Grand Ave.
Can you give us your residential address?
Sure, 19145 Devonshire Street, Beverly Hills, Michigan.
Thank you.
Back doors always open, come on by any time. In the meantime, I do want to ask a question in regard to this proposed amendment to the Marijuana Business Ordinance. As you know, I've been following this quite diligently since Mayor Dempsey invited me to come back into the community and get involved back in 2018. It looks like the city clerk is going to have the authority to determine which application shall be accepted and approved. As you know, back in May, I think it was May 12th of 2021, when we started with the process of the four significant areas identified by the city attorney, one of which was the outdoor grow, where Commissioner Hammond and Commissioner Goodnow got hustled by pleasantries to bring that outdoor grow issue back on. But the second item was in regard to the selection committee. We got rid of the review committee, and the city voted on and approved having the city manager review all of these applications and submit them to the city commission, and the city commission would ultimately be the final decision-maker in regard to what establishments they would enjoy having come into their community. So my question to this interim city manager would be, how and when did we shift from the city manager, interim or otherwise, having the authority and the ability to review applications and submit them to the city commission for further review, to now where the city clerk now is the sole and discretionary decider on who gets accepted and why? There also seems to be a little bit of, it's not a question, but some ambiguity, and it's just interesting that the city clerk even can impose such other and further requirements as he, she shall deem necessary and appropriate for the orderly submission of applications. Doesn't make any sense. You got to clearly identify what those other criteria are. The city attorney constantly kept telling us that he wanted to adhere to the state rules and regulations in regard to a fair, open, and honest procedure in regard to the municipality selecting the most qualified applicants to, of course, submit applications for the marijuana applications and permits within the city. So I do find that quite interesting, that now of a sudden, we're shifting gears and just jamming this one through. Other than that, I do appreciate your time, and again, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission?
Ryan Theory, 62 Rosebud. You know, I'll jump on that fair and competitive process. I think, you know, for two years, that's all we really talked about was fair and competitive. I remember standing here two years ago, talking about social equity, availability for the people, people, citizens of Mount Clemens, to have an opportunity. Somehow, we kept walking backwards, okay? This right here, this picture, the same gentleman that was blocking the door in and out, same gentleman that threatened me. I removed my kids, my son, from that line after I made communications with people up here. I was told, Ryan, we're going to rescind it. We know these people don't even have applications. We're going to do the right thing. The right thing is I have over $330,000 on property, and somehow, you guys are going to let me out because I communicated with people on this board in October and said the last thing I want to do is bring a lawsuit. Can we talk to somebody? I talked to Anthony Chubb, who held back information in our court case because I didn't want to go with the lawsuit. This, here that you're doing this amendment, it's going to get killed. You guys know it. There's two, three people here that already are going to sue you. This amendment's going nowhere. You have jars, and you have pleasantries that already have licenses, and now you have two people, one and two? You have four licenses out of the five available, already spoken for? And that's going to be fair, and that's going to be competitive? And the reason that you rescinded this, and it's going back to the same ordinance, was for public safety? That's what the manager, Don Johnson, said. That's what Laura Krab said. That's what you agreed to, was that we were rescinding this because it was a public safety issue. We were rescinding this because we made a mistake. And all you did is you got bullied by somebody who wanted to bring you to court, and you wanted to push this thing through. I don't want to be your enemy. I want to be your friend. We're supposed to be community. That stuff right there, that touched me. Kids, snowflakes, community participation. But none of you guys are standing up for anybody here. I see this guy, and I talk about communication. This is what you guys do. You tell somebody one thing one day, and two weeks later, he gets something that's a mail talking about $75 million. That's called bait and switch. That's what it's called. Now, I don't know, I'm not threatening you with a lawsuit, but I'm going to tell you. I'm not done fighting. And I'm going to tell you, my page of complaints by two attorneys now is over six pages. Your amendment, your ordinance, isn't even real, and you're going to do the same ordinance that you did, that you rescinded. How does that make sense? How does anybody here feel good about themselves? How can you feel good about yourselves?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. All right, seeing no further participation, we'll move to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Shipman.
At the last regular City Commission meeting, a citizen asked why we re-appropriated ARPA funds to be used for police services. Shortly after the Commission's original approval of the ARPA funds, the federal government expanded the uses of the funds, which included funding for law protection and enforcement. With the city looking to expend nearly $2 million in federal monies this fiscal year, it will be necessary to have the audit team perform a single audit per federal regulations. This is far more comprehensive than a normal audit, which makes it necessary for all the contractors, as well as the city, to comply with federal labor statutes and the underlying regulations stated within the Act that governs the ARPA distribution. As a result, this places additional work on the prospective contractors, which they include in their pricing. With the approval of the reappropriation of ARPA monies toward law enforcement services, the city simply must produce to the audit team the existing contract with the county along with the monthly paid invoices. Subsequently, the city will save money on the audit process, which can be put towards the projects, and eliminates having to spend additional funds in conforming to the many burdensome regulations.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the work session and City Commission meeting minutes for December 19th, 2022.
Support.
Questions or comments? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving to general business, item A, Amendment to the Mount Clemens Marijuana Business Ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the first reading of the attached amendment to the section 24.117, section 7, application for, and renewal of permits of the City of Mount Clemens Marijuana Business Ordinance, and set January 17th, 2023 for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
City Clerk.
I have an amendment.
Okay. Uh, no. Fournier or Voorhees.
Either one.
All right, Mr. Shipman.
At the June 6th, 2022 City Commission meeting, administration recommended that the Commission rescind its previous approval of the second reading and adoption of the Marijuana Business Ordinance. This recommendation was based upon suspected difficulties and irregularities in the application review process, and to allow additional opportunity to investigate alternative methods of accepting, processing, and reviewing applications. Subsequently, litigation ensued, which has now been resolved. Therefore, as a result, the city attorney has drafted the attached amendment to section 24.117- section 7, City of Mount Clemens Marijuana Business Ordinance, establishing new timeframes for accepting and evaluating applications, and establishment of a process to establish the order of reviewing applications.
Mr. Murray, do you want to?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
It seems like we should try to answer a few of the questions that are out there.
You will answer them in administrative responses at the next meeting, I would assume.
I agree with, I know, but that's two weeks away, and it seems like we have some of those answers now, and we can, I mean, I was confused at first as well because I thought the City Commission originally was going to approve this, but it was changed to the city clerk, and I think there were some valid reasons for that. And I think we could, we could say why that change was made, because it is not any subjectivity.
The first draft of umpteen drafts had the city manager, and that was when the city was, the Commission was discussing a subjective basis for awarding points, and therefore establishing who would get permits. As you recall, that was totally reversed, and the Commission adopted a system that was totally based on where there were no limits on permits, and the only limitations were based upon distance requirements. As a result of that, there was no need for the manager. There is no discretion involved by the clerk, because it will be a process of a number the applications are assigned, going to the maps, measuring out the distances, and applications will be denied as those are established, if they violate those distance requirements. So that's why the clerk is involved, to the extent the clerk is involved, because it's merely ministerial and normal activity for the clerk to handle.
Which makes total sense. So, I'm sure if she ran into any difficulty, she'd go to the city manager and work that out accordingly. So that's why that was changed.
Right.
The, a lot of things with respect to the lawsuit were outside of our control. We didn't have any control over the judge. We, there were things that, I don't like some of the results of this, but be that as it may, those are the results, and we're stuck with them. There's not much we can do. Can't think of any other questions that we can.
I could answer one other point. Relative to the clerk, such additional rules is the clerk may impose? Those are the seizure to accept applications in terms of where they're going to line up, how that is going to be governed. We've had discussions relative to that. We will have further discussions, and we'll also have involve Sergeant O'Brien in those discussions. But as it stands right now, the thoughts are that there will be a, much like at the polling booths, there will be a sign that will start the line, where the line will start, and that there will probably be a table on the inside doors at the lower level where the clerk and her assistant will be to accept the applications, and then applicants can come in one at a time and then be reversed one at a time. But it's, that's the reason for that language.
No, I'm sorry. No, absolutely not. No, I'm sorry, this is not a, this is not a public hearing, so the public has had its time during public participation, but at this time, the public cannot participate in discussion. Does anybody from the Commission have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, we'll call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
All right, general business 9B, second public hearing for downtown maintenance program. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to rescind the adopted motion to set the date for the second public hearing on January 3rd, and to move to approve the date for the second public hearing on January 17th.
Support. Okay, Mr. Shipman.
At the last regular City Commission meeting, a motion was made to set the date for the second public hearing for the downtown maintenance program on January 3rd, 2023. The bid opening for the downtown sweeping contract is set for January 10th, 2023. I think in order to have proper discussion of downtown maintenance, it would be beneficial to know exactly what the cost options for the program will be. Therefore, that's why I'm recommending to change the date for the second public hearing to January 17th, 2023.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the roll, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Item C, discussion of the City Commission vacancy.
I move to discuss the guidelines for filling the City Commission vacancy and approve the suggested timeline and notice of City Commission vacancy for publication.
Mr. Shipman.
At the regular Mount Clemens City Commission meeting of December 19th, 2022, the body accepted City Commissioner Denise Metzer's letter of resignation effective December 31st, 2022. In accordance with the city charter, any vacancy which occurs in the commission shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the commission. The appointed commissioner will hold office of the balance of Commissioner Metzer's original term, which expires in November of 2025. If the vacancy in the office of commissioner is not filled within 60 days, which will be, March 1st will be the last day of that, 2023, the vacancy shall be filled for the respective unexpired term at a special election. Attached is a notice of City Commission vacancy for publication, as well as the suggested timeline that was prepared by the city clerk.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to look at the calendar of the proposed timeline? I believe that is probably where we should start. And do all the dates work for each of you? I have a conflict on one of them. Does anybody? I have a conflict on January 23rd for the special, for the candidate, the special City Commission meeting and the candidate interviews. I'll be out of town.
Are you proposing to move it, her?
I mean, I'd like to be there for the interviews.
I think you should.
Yeah, I would prefer to, if we could move it. I know that will, that would obviously back up the February 6th date. We wouldn't necessarily.
So you want to move it later?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm at a SEMCOG conference in DC on that date, and then I'm leaving shortly after that when I get back.
So talking about the following week?
The following week, I'm gone as well. Like, I won't be back until the February 6th meeting.
Will you be here the 6th?
Yes.
Why don't we move the 23rd to the 6th and then?
But the 6th is a regular commission meeting, so would we do a regular commission meeting and the candidate interviews? That's a long.
That's a long, yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, so that's.
Can we do it like the 24th or?
I'll be out of town. I'll be out of town the 22nd through the 25th. Then I'm back on the 25th, but I'm gone again the 27th through the 5th.
Do it the 7th.
Of February. So like, I think, yeah, maybe the day after the commission meeting.
The 7th.
Why couldn't you combine the introduction of the candidates with the candidate interviews?
Because that's a regular commission meeting, too.
Yeah, it's a regular commission meeting.
That's a regular commission meeting.
You're not going to have enough time to...
We have until March 1st.
We have, yeah. Right. We have time in that sense. Yeah, I mean, I can do the 7th. That would work for me. You're going to be gone on the 6th. On the 6th.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm happy to...
To move it a little over. Okay. So would the 7th work for everybody?
February 7th?
Yes. Okay.
So the 23rd's going to be February 7th.
And then we would select on... No, the only issue is I am going to...
13th?
Uh...
Wait, no.
No, that's... The 20th. I am going to be gone for the 20th. That's the only commission meeting I'm going to miss, but I am going to miss that commission meeting.
Wait, isn't that President's...
Oh, wait, 21st. Same. I come back that day, so, yeah.
Okay, so you're not available.
Right.
So the 21st would have been...
It's just, it is a commission meeting. You guys will have the commission meeting, but I don't know if we want to do the selection that day, and then... Because then you have...
On March 1st.
No, we're not sure the selection's going to go through.
Right.
And get... Remember that.
That's what I mean. Right.
Past history is any indication.
Right. Right. But we don't want to...
Is there any other day between here you can do...
Then it will must be better to move it. Try to push it up a little.
In between where?
In between the 7th and the 17th.
Are you here the 13th?
Yes.
Is everybody else around the 13th?
That's our strategic planning workshop.
Of January? No, it's February 13th, isn't it?
Yeah, February 13th.
Keeping you busy.
You were asking about January, right?
No, I was asking about February, because it's the last. It's a selection. So that's why I was looking at the 13th.
I mean, we could do like 15th or the 14th. I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to spend their Valentine's Day selecting a commissioner, but...
Show them some love.
About the 15th, the Wednesday.
I'm available on the 15th. Okay.
For what?
So the selection... We'll do a special meeting for the selection and approval of appointment.
But that's not... It's not a regular...
No, we'll have a special meeting for it.
Special meeting, okay. So February 15th.
Selection.
Okay. So it'll be a special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So can we get a revised...
For sure.
Real quick? Because some are there.
So I guess we would need to amend our motion, too, because the motion is as presented. So with the amendment of candidate interviews taking place on February 7th, 2023, and a special meeting for city commission selection and approval of appointment on February 15th. Are the people who made the motion and supported it comfortable with that?
I did make the motion.
I did. You made the motion? Okay.
Oh, that was Fournier and Campbell.
Good. Okay. Is there any other part of the process that anyone wants to discuss? I guess we can just mention applicants are encouraged... Sorry. Letters of application will be accepted during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, or via email at... And it's listed here, cmartin@mountclemens.gov, which would be to the city clerk. The application filing deadline is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, at 4:30 PM. All applicants are encouraged to attend the regular city commission meeting of January 17th at 7:00 PM for an opportunity to introduce themselves to the members of the commission. The meeting will take place in the city commission chamber halls at City Hall, One Cracker Boulevard, at 7:00 PM. So that all still remains the same, as everybody... Right. And we have until March 1st. So if we... On that February 15th date, you know, you... It could go before the commission again on the 21st. And it can also... We could also have another special meeting if we really wanted to or really needed to. Okay. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krapp.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey. Yes. Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes. Thank you for accommodating my schedule there, everybody. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support. Roll call, please.
Voorhees.
I just have to ask a question since I'm on that. Do I need to abstain, or...
I don't think it benef... I mean...
No.
Yeah. I don't think financially benefited from it, so I think...
Yeah, I know. Another need. Yes.
Actually, I know you don't, so...
Okay. Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes. All right, city managers report. Mr. Shipman.
And Fire Department, I'd like to welcome new firefighters Nathan Irwin and Alfred First to our team. Their first day of employment began today at 6:55 AM this morning. Over in community development, the code enforcement team and I made a trip to Port Huron to participate in an administrative hearings bureau proceeding and to go over the AHB process in detail with your code coordinator. Wanted to send out a big thank you to Port Huron for all their help in this endeavor. Recreation is busy as usual. Recreation has a full schedule of winter season activities. Registration opens on Wednesday, January 4th. You can enroll online at mountclemensrecreation.org 24 hours a day, or in person at the community center from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Could be offering fitness classes, pickleball, art, music, dance, martial arts, and more. There will be offerings for all ages, and we hope to be part of your new year. I want to send out a big thank you to the street department staff during the recent snowstorm for maintaining our streets and downtown sidewalks throughout the holiday in some extremely cold and windy conditions. Upcoming events on February 9th, 16th Annual Chili Cookoff Fundraiser will be held. Tickets will be available at participating bars and restaurants in the coming weeks. And on February 10th, the annual ice carving show will be held downtown. Anyone interested in sponsoring an ice sculpture can contact the Mount Clemens DDA office at 586-469-4167, or email our own, Mickey Weiss, for further information. You can follow the DDA special events on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram at Downtown Mount Clemens.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, we will move on to our second opportunity for the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. Again, we'll go in person, and then we'll go to the Zoom. And if anybody has... Would like to, come on up.
Patrick, 2016557, Howard Drive. I was hoping to get the clarity conversation today, but apparently we have to ask a question, hopefully be answered next week or two weeks from now. So since we outlined in the ordinance, the 1,500 feet from 237 North River Road and 101 Northbound Grashit or Northbound Rosepet, no facility can be opened within 1,500 feet. So now that we amended it, and there's a lawsuit, and there's applicants, or there's applications, are those locations going to be announced? Yes or no? If not, what's the reason behind it? Is there going to be a map? How are we going to be able to tell what locations or properties will be available or that would be able to apply? So there's a lot of questions that need to be addressed. I'm hoping that that gets addressed next week or two weeks from now. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to address the commission? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Dante Walker, 163 North River Court. Just introduce myself as the new Mount Clemens Community Schools School Board trustee. I'd like to thank the voters for voting for me and being diligent during the campaign process. Tomorrow, we will be having our first organizational meeting at 6:30 at the secondary complex. One big thing that we're going to have to do is to select a new superintendent at the end of June. Really looking for search firms right now. I just want to make the public aware, so you guys know, because we're going to need community forums and support during that process. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome. Is there anyone else at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Campbell.
Just like to give a thank you to all the residents that decorated their homes at Christmas. I drove around, looked at them, but then I actually went around at night on a walk, and they looked completely different at night, so... A thank you to all those that decorated, and to the beautification committee for their work in presenting the awards. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hammond.
I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Happy New Year, everyone, and I hope this is a very productive one for Mount Clemens and for all of us up here as we face a few more hurdles in trying to get things done, but we are working hard at it. We truly are. And again, thank you to the beautification committee. They do an outstanding job in this city and really deserve that round of applause. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
A little bird told me it was somebody's birthday. So happy belated birthday to our mayor.
Thank you.
I won't ask you how old you are, but was it a major birthday? Did it end in a zero or a five?
Well, it's a five, I guess.
Yeah. I'll keep it short and sweet. Again, the beautification, the homes were... I live on North Esplanade. It was like a fantasy world down there. They really did a great job. So thank you again to the beautification committee for doing the snowflake awards, and thank you to all the residents who were... Made our city very festive. Mr. Walker, congratulations. As a former school board member, myself and the mayor also was a school board member, it's a tough job. So, you know, keep your shoulders up, and you'll be fine. All right? And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey.
Congratulations, Dante Walker. I think you're going to do a good job. Thank you to the beautification commission. They always do a great job, whether it be the snowflake or the skeletons at Halloween. They really put their heart and soul into it to make the city more vibrant and getting people involved. I think that's really one of the things that they do, and they do it very well. So thank you and congratulations to all of the snowflake winners. And Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. I want to mention that we have another... I don't want to say contest, but we have another opportunity to recognize people doing a great job in the community by our local treasure awards. So if you have somebody in mind who goes above and beyond and really is an excellent volunteer in the community and does that selflessly, and it can be a community member or a business member, and, you know, we just ask that you fill out the application that is available online on our city website. I don't know... Do you know what date? I forget what the date is. It's all listed on the application on there, but I can't remember the date that it ends. So I know it's coming up. So go out there and try to make sure you nominate somebody. It's a great recognition. And then, of course, the beautification committee, they put a lot of time and effort into a lot of endeavors within the community, and they are a group that quietly, you know, works to make Mount Clemens beautiful. And so I'd like to thank them for all their efforts. And of course, everybody who decorated their house. I love that. My husband, we affectionately named him the Grinch, so you really won't see a lot of lights on my house. So I appreciate everyone else's lights. I'd like to thank Michelle Weiss and the DDA for our fireworks this year. Our sponsors were Sa... Nickel and Saft Insurance. Just tell me, I don't remember.
And the Discovery Center for Big Children.
Okay. And then evening? And the evening one, where the DDA. So, and of course, Ruley's Towing for the ball drop for the children. It was excellent. We had... I think we even had a bigger crowd at 9 o'clock than we did at midnight, so obviously people have early bedtimes. But it was great, and, I mean, it was a really big crowd at 9 o'clock. And when we drove through town, the town was very, very busy. So that was really exciting to see. It was a great day. So thank you very much, and Happy New Year to everybody. We have a strategic planning session, as you may have heard, while we were trying to figure out dates for this new commissioner appointment. Strategic planning session on February 13th, and I really can't drive home enough that that is a really important time for the commission to set goals for this year and work with staff to try to figure out what is the trajectory of 2023,